I'm just doing a quick head count, one, two, three, four, five, six. I think we're all here. All right. I'd wrap my gavel, but I'm afraid I might scare myself because I'm not used to loud noises anymore. I will call the village board meeting to order. This is the regular meeting at the Village Beach Park. March 25th, 7:03 is the time as I have it. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trusty Gus.
Richard, can you hear us?
His name is there.
His name is there.
He's there twice.
But he's trying to connect the audio.
Connecting. Trying.
He's trying. Well, go ahead and call everyone else then.
Trusty Johnson.
I am here in audio and video.
Okay, trustee Miller.
Present.
Trusty Addison.
Here.
Trusty Sidik.
Is muted.
I'll keep going. Trusty Wells.
Here.
Mayor Hooker.
Here.
Mary Frollo.
Here.
Mark McDonald's here.
All right, checking in. Calling all Linda Sitticks. Linda, you're muted if you can hear us. I see two Richard Gasts now. Either that or I'm starting to see double.
Hey, two Richards is better.
We're all seeing it.
Oh, good. It's a relief. Can we unmute Linda? You can't, okay. She may have stepped away. All right. Well, we have evidence that they're here, but we have not actually heard their voices. So we do have enough for a quorum, so we'll go ahead and carry on and keep our eyes and ears open for both Richard and Linda to join us. First up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all rise and please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic.
One nation, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is our first of two opportunities for public comment. The first opportunity comes now, which is the public comment on any agenda items. If there's a member of the public that wishes to address this board about an upcoming agenda item, now would be the time to unmute yourself and identify yourself and state your case. All right. Not hearing anyone, not seeing anyone.
Sorry. My name is Sergio Facundo and I'm a son of Jose and Sons Landscaping in 12920 Wadsworth Road.
Yes.
And something's coming up on that. I just want to make myself present. I don't know if I just wait till the case starts, so.
Yes, well, you are coming up under the trustee report, so we will be recognizing that and thank you for letting us know you're there and we will certainly address anything needs to be addressed with you.
Thank you.
Trusty Sidik, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
I was here the whole time pushing star six for unmute.
You are marked here. And checking in.
Thank you.
With trustee Gus. Richard, can you hear us? Nope. Still no Richard. All right. Thank you. Was there any other public comment about agenda items? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, our consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of the Village of Beach Village Board Regular Meeting Minutes from March 11th of 2021. Finance Report from February of 2021. Public Safety Report from February of 2021 and bills presented for payment in the amount of $124,290.05. Do I have, does anyone wish to have any of these items considered separately? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
I think so move.
We got a motion from Miller and Sidik. Would one of you take the second?
I'll take the second.
I'll take the second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second from both Miller and Sidik. We'll let the clerk sort that out.
Try calling Richard and see if I can.
Delayed reaction.
Go ahead. Do, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trusty Johnson.
Hi.
Trusty Miller.
Hi.
Trusty Addison.
Hi.
Trusty Sidik.
Hi.
Trusty Wells. Trusty Wells.
I think I can see your lips moving Larry, but we can't hear any sound.
Larry might know sign language.
Okay, Richard's on the screen.
I know a little bit.
Ask him again.
Trusty, Trusty Wells.
He's working on his mic. Okay, thank you.
Trusty Gus.
Trusty Gus, I understand that you're on the phone now. Can you hear him?
Yes.
All right, so we'll mark trustee Gus present and we are considering the motion on the consent agenda. How do you vote?
Can you hear us, Richard?
Yes, I can.
Did you, did you want to vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, I do. Hi.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. I believe that was unanimous. We shall move on. I have nothing from the mayor's report. We'll move on to trustee reports. First up, we have trustee Jensen, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a lot to report. We had a rousing finance meeting last night during which we went over the budget in excruciating detail. And I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what the next action is going to be. Peggy, can I help with the timeline? But we will be bringing that to the board in short order. Peggy, can you, can you help me with that?
Yes, we have one more finance meeting and we'll be bringing it to the second meeting in April to the board, April 22nd.
Thank you.
Hearing and then approval, hopefully.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, the next, the next finance meeting is the 21st. And that will be virtual again for the indefinite future, I guess. That's all I have to report, man.
Thank you. Next up, trustee Gus, Parks and Recreation Committee.
What can I say? It's raining. We're going to get a lot of rain at the end of this month and in April so we can get the beautiful flowers.
There you go.
The extent.
All right, sir, thank you. Next up, Planning, Building and Zoning Committee, trustee Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I have to reconsider the motion to adopt an ordinance repealing ordinance 2016-0-1 for conversion of non-conforming use in SR District at 12920 West Wadsworth Road. Just checking, can you hear me okay?
No.
Can you turn your volume up at all, Larry?
How's that?
A little better, but we'll do our best on this end as well. It's
Is that any better?
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can hear you. It's just, it's, it seems muffled, but that's okay. We'll, we'll listen carefully.
Start over?
No, I heard your introduction.
Okay. At the Plant and Development Board of Appeals meeting of April, excuse me, of February the 4th of 2021, including the March 4th of 2021, a public meeting was held regarding the request of Jose and Sergio Facundo to extend the community committee's regalia. Approve the ordinance number 2016-0-1. Allow an existing non-conforming contact and storage yard and caretaker building to continue operation at 12920 West Wadsworth Road, which is a suburban residential zone. The ordinance that, the original ordinance was to be in effect for five years or could be revoked for years. Or extended up to three years if the board so desired. The business had, to date, the business has not complied with numerous conditions of approval in the ordinance, the original ordinance, including annual business registration and associated inspections to determine compliance with the condition we used to get. Petitioners submitting a request on extension in response to the second written notice by the village. The Planning Commission, zoning boards held a hearing on February the 4th. And that meeting was continued on the March 4th of 2021. The continuation for March 4th, 2021 was offered to the petitioner by the Plan Commission zoning board of appeals in order to allow the petitioner to meet with staff at the subject property and develop a list of corrective actions to address in the short term as part of the extension request. The business did not meet with staff prior to the hearing of March 4th of 2021. And they did not respond to attempts by staff to arrange the meeting. As a result, the consensus of the commission is that the business has not made a disciplined effort to work towards compliance with the original conditions of approval. As noted in the findings of fact, the petitioner has interceded that the business has been negligent. And no evidence was provided to support the extension request. The commission recommended the verification of the condition of 5-0. And the ordinance that, for the board's consideration, would deny the petitioner's request for an extension to the condition of use. We also repeal ordinance number 2016-0-1 and revoke the condition of use permitted at all. And again, this is presented in the form of a motion.
All right, if I understood that correctly, we do have a motion on the table. I'll restate the this is for an ordinance repealing ordinance 2016-0-1 and revoking the conditional use permit for the conversion of a non-conforming use in an SR District at 12920 West Wadsworth Road. There was a motion made by trustee Wells. Is there a second?
Second, Miller.
We have a motion by, a second by trustee Miller. Discussion.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
This one is, is really puzzling to me. It's, you know, I never have, have questioned the decision of the zoning board. I, you know, we respect their work. And, and generally they're right. And I hope they're in this case too. But there's a lot of background to this that, that I don't see in the, in the documents that we have. For instance, what was the original cause for the 2016 conditional use permit? Was, was there a neighborhood issue? Were there complaints? Or what brought this to, what brought this up? Question one. And question two is how in the world did we, did we as a village, and we've changed administrator and, and staff since then, but how did we allow us to persist for five years? Without taking action until the, the permit is, is up for renewal? So that's, that's the information I like to have from staff. The other side is the, the petitioner was acknowledging in their letter in December what their obligations were, so they have no, no no cause for saying that they don't know what their obligations are. Since then, we had the, the meeting in February continue to March and nothing happened in the interim. And it appears that staff made efforts to, to, to meet with them to bring them into compliance. And it looks to me like all these counts that we're showing in this, in this complaint here really boil down to the root cause is, is item number 18, which is failure to, to apply for the license and the, the related inspections, which would have determined if indeed the other violations exist. But if we're not on, on premise, it's kind of hard to do it from aerial photos and and from the others pictures we saw from the street. So those are some of the issues I'd like to have addressed before I have to vote on this one.
All right, I think it'd be appropriate to solicit a comment from our staff. Andrew, did you want to fill in some gaps for us?
Sure, I'll do the best that I can to fill in some of the gaps. I, I trustee Jensen just said I was not here in 2016. My understanding of the type of conditional use for the conversion of an existing non-conforming use, the idea was that the non-conforming use could be made to be more compatible with the surrounding residential uses by going through the CUP process. So it's a somewhat unique conditional use. My understanding is there were several that were done this way to allow existing non-conforming uses to be, to be granted this opportunity to do a conditional use. It has multiple conditions attached to it. I do agree with the assessment that had, had the business registration inspections occurred in 2016 through 2020 that the, the staff who've been working with the business to correct the violations and just the general lack of compliance with the conditions of approval. The, the business did not submit for registration in any of those years. So we were trying to use that month in, between the February meeting and the March meeting to sort of make up for lost time, work with the business to come up with a strategy to identify priority corrective items so that that could be rolled into this extension request. And as was noted, that did not, that did not occur.
Andrew, I can ask you for your presence, but does the record show any efforts on our part to bring the compliance during those five years?
I, I have looked through our, our system and I do see notes of attempts to have the business registration done. Notification, that sort of thing. But, but again, I, I don't know the full extent of how that was, how that was handled.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
All right, other, other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I if I could, just for the record for Don's clarification. I think that these were a number of non-conforming conditional use that were left over before the village was incorporated and the attempt by community development was to bring them into some type of compliance with the conditional use permits that was established in 2016. That was the attempt to bring them to some type of compliance of grandfather non-conforming status.
Okay.
What was the big issue? Was it the commercial use in the suburban residential zoning or was it the, the caretaker's residence? The fact that they were, I don't understand because the, the original the original ordinance was to allow the business in the suburban residential with a caretaker's residence, right, attached? Or on the property?
Yeah, I think it was all of the above. Is that correct, Andrew?
That's correct. It was, the, the primary issue was, of course, the contractors' storage yard on that, on that property in the SR District. It did already have an existing residence as well, so that the, the conversion CUP was for the, for the purpose of, of dealing with both of those land uses.
Yeah.
I have a question for Andrew.
Go ahead, Linda.
I'm looking at the aerial view that was attached in our package of the actual property. And to me, of course, it looks like an eyesore. How is this? Is this the reason why the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending revocation? Or is this aerial view that I'm looking at really acceptable? I'm just looking, I, I was just in awe by looking at the aerial view of what's actually on the property.
So the, the Plan Commission and ZBA, their recommendation for revocation was based on the lack of any evidence of compliance with the conditions of approval from 2016. So you have in your package, you see the, the, the original CUP. I do. Has a lot of, I think there's 20 something conditions of approval. The, several of them, it's, it, we can tell without even entering the property that those conditions of approval haven't been met. And those are the ones that I focused on the staff report. You did note from the aerial photo, yes, it does appear that there are some vehicles being stored. There's some general material storage piles and things that, that do demonstrate that they are not in compliance with other conditions of approval. But the, the, the general issue that the Plan Commission, ZBA, had was that there was no evidence to suggest that, that there was compliance with any of the conditions.
Okay, and that's kind of what the aerial photo is telling me. So thank you very much.
Okay. We do have the petitioner on the line and he did ask to be recognized. Mr. Facundo, if you want to weigh in here?
Yes, I just want to let everybody know that, I know Mr. Jennings knows just how everything was proceeded. As far as, it's just been negligence our negligence to respond to you guys as far as how to set up a meeting to get things cleared out. Things been, really being cleaned up right now, which we know it's a big, big mess. We've just had trucks left over. Things are being cleaned up. And all we, all we want is, we had a we had an issue of not responding as three parties. My sister, Miriam, me, Sergio, and my other brother, Jose, who we all kind of got mistakenly who was going to respond. And we thought this guy was going to respond and this other one was going to respond. So just not asking for any, you know, excuses to tell you, but just to, to let you know that we, we are trying to comply with the cleanup of everything which we're doing right now. Especially that just everything's got to be in order. It's been, we haven't answered one because my brother lives there. I don't live there. And then sometimes I get the letter or he would get the letter. He would give it to me and we didn't, we wouldn't know who would comply. So.
I'm, I'm going to jump in and just speak for them. Unfortunately, they have not been on top of it. My dad, the owner. And I'm not looking for any kind of pity or anything. He is, my dad has Alzheimer's and he's the one that kept that property clean all the time, my mom and my dad. And unfortunately, my brothers aren't as responsible as he was. And I'm just going to throw it out there because that's how it is. And yes, they did ask me to read an email. I get so many that I lost the one that Andrew sent. And unfortunately, I think that's the one that got us in trouble. I have three brothers. They have their own business. They use my dad's property because my dad had a landscaping business. And I can tell you, we're always on it. My mom's always on them. You guys got to clean, you guys got to clean. It's just, they just work so hard and they work weekends. And I can tell you that yes, in aerial picture, it's probably, it looks bad. From the outside, I think it doesn't, you can't tell how bad it is. We complied or they complied with some of like putting trees around. And, but the aerial, I can tell you it probably looks bad. But I, unfortunately, they did not keep up with trying to get to talk to you guys and comply and respond on time.
Okay. Can I ask a question? Were any of you present at the February hearing? The
I was.
You were present at the February hearing?
I, I was, yes. I was at the February hearing and then, but I was in Mexico and Andrew sent a email to my sister and things got confused. So, but I, I was here, I mean, at the meeting, but I was in Mexico.
Okay.
I just, I just have a hard time believing if you were present at the February meeting when it was discussed that it was being that it was being tabled for one month until March that regardless of, of, of an email or two, you would have understood the urgency that you have a four-week period to make some arrangements. Whether you were going to be in town or not, your sister or your brothers could have come to the village hall and, and worked on making those arrangements because it was stated at the February meeting that you have until March to work something out. That's the part I don't, I don't understand. I mean, and I'm ignoring the whole five years with the list of things that you weren't in compliance with before that point. That's, that's
Yeah, you're, you're totally true. You're, you're right. It was negligence of me, myself, where being out of here should have kept up to date with my brother, which I thought he was going to be keeping up to date and it never happened. And my brother was waiting to get a the message from my sister. So it's, it's a confusion, but it is true. We should have called in ourselves to, to even, you know, set up the meeting, even my brother or me, even if I wasn't here, but I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. It's just, it's just gosh, I don't know how you say it in English, but it sure is negligence of ourselves.
Other discussion?
Mayor, at this juncture, I, I'd like to get some input from either Andrew or attorney. If this item were to be tabled for another month and if it were, would we have, would we lose any leverage in this case to? Would we, would we, are we missing a window to, to revoke this permit? Or what, what would our best course of action at this point be if we wanted to to give one more last opportunity to bring this place into compliance?
I, I don't think you'd be losing any leverage, trustee Jensen, in terms of timing relative to your options. You have, at this point before you, an ordinance that affirms the recommendation of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals to revoke. If you were to table that to give this petitioner an opportunity to address some of the concerns and they do, you know, we, we could bring back a, if, another ordinance that would be an ordinance extending the CUP with, with, you know, new conditions. So the answer is no, I don't think you'd lose leverage from a procedural standpoint based on what happens here. If this motion is approved, repealing the ordinance under the zoning code, there is an appeal right to the mayor directly where an evidentiary hearing can be held for this petitioner. So that's, that's the lay of the land that we're facing.
Yeah, I read, I read the appeal option in the, in the board minutes. Okay, well, at, at this point.
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, I just have one question for the petitioners as I'm deciding here. Are the petitioners willing to come forward and come into compliance in a small window timeframe at this point? Given what they've had the opportunity to do in the past, are they willing to come into compliance as soon as possible if that is an option?
Yes, we are. We are actually starting to get rid of all the junk that's around. We started to clean up everything. We, we know we have the, the small window that you say to, to do all this work. But we definitely just, it's just a, a business that it doesn't comply. I mean, we've never had any complaints with our neighbors around. We just park our trucks there, just bring our equipment and, and all we have to do is just keep our area clean. And really, it's been our fault that we haven't done it.
They will do whatever it takes to, whatever window you guys give us, they will do whatever it takes to get that cleaned up.
And I am going back to the aerial photo because I, I feel that the aerial photo to me is very, very disturbing.
Yes.
I don't know how that can be cleaned up in a reasonable amount of time to become, you know, to come into compliance. But this is the thing that really struck me was the aerial photo of what is on that property. And I do have a problem with that.
I, I totally understand. And we have already started actually three weeks ago, starting to move all kinds of stuff around and obviously probably can't see aerial picture recent, but But today, we got rid of three vehicles that were just parked in there. And there's some more stuff to be moved around. But we're gonna keep trying, even even if this doesn't go through, we still have to clean, clean up all our messes. It's just like my dad used to do that. So.
I I don't have a business there. I just, I'm there for my parents. But I can tell you that they have moved vehicles, and they are working on it. So.
Yeah, and you know, I just have a comment that your business is right adjoining a residential area. So, you know, you might think that it's obscured by some of the plantings. But, you know, if there's a two story structure, it's probably not entirely obscured. You know, we try to bend over backwards for our small businesses in the village. And, you know, it's unfortunate that everything has come to this point. But, you know, I I hear sincerity in your voices, and I'm inclined to go along with Trustee Jensen at this point.
Thank you.
I I I have one more question, and this may be for Andrew. I I know there's a lot of talk about the aerial being offensive. But are the, the list of twenty things that were to be brought into compliance from the original agreement in 2016, is it possible to address the majority, if not all of those, you know, one month time, if we were to just table this issue until the second meeting in April?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. Again, we haven't been able to arrange to meet on the property. You know, going off the aerial photo from 2018, there's been three, three years of of potential cleanup, demolition of buildings that we may or may not know about. So, it's, it's anyone's guess, honestly. But, but I, if, if it's the consensus of the board to allow that month, we could certainly get on the property and make a more detailed assessment of, of the conditions.
Well, I agree with Trustee Jensen. I, I, I know that the Planning and Zoning Commission does, I I respect their work, and I know they spent a lot of time on this. So, I don't, I don't want to disrespect that. But at the same time, I don't want to affect someone's livelihood.
Right.
If it's at all possible to bring this into compliance. So, so I guess, like Jim said, the best thing to do would be to maybe table it for a month. And if things are looking good, then maybe prepare a second ordinance to vote on the extension, or keep this one intact. If it doesn't look like it's going to happen, we'll just vote on this one to revoke again at the same time, I guess.
Yep. Procedurally, I, I could see a, a delay tabling, giving time to the petitioner. And then further, in the past, where we've had conditional use permits that were not being, maybe, maybe had some, some work to do to actually go on a year by year extension, and have that extension requested, inspection done, and and the like, in an effort to ensure compliance, and also not, as just Trustee Jensen said, let five years pass with no progress, or maybe even worse in conditions. So, I, I think first, from, from my seat here, to the Ficundo family, I'm so sorry to hear about your father and Alzheimer's. It's, it's no way to go, I'll tell you that. And having a father that died of Parkinson's and went through all the dementia and all the failings, it's a painful thing for a family to watch. And, and you're in my prayers. I'm, I'm sorry that you're going through that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's a painful thing for the family. I, I think that we're probably on the right track. I think if I came into this meeting hoping for something, it would be something along this line, that maybe the board would extend a little grace, not a lot, but a little grace, give an opportunity here. This is, of course, the busiest time for anyone in the landscaping business. This is going to just put a double burden on everyone in the family. But if they're willing, I think we should join them in their willingness. And, you know, I would certainly entertain a motion to table this to the second meeting in April.
Mayor, I'd be happy to give you that motion.
And Second by Sidik.
And what the, was the condition that, that Andrew report back to us at our next meeting with, with the progress, so we can prepare, prepare a, a resolution to either extend or, or terminate this CUP at, at the second meeting in April.
Yeah, first, I'd like to see an updated aerial, too, at that time.
It's, that may be a challenge. Twenty eighteen is the most recent aerial. But certainly, if staff could meet out there, we could.
We have a village drone.
Yeah, well, well.
Not that close to the airport, you don't want to do that.
Mark, Mark offered to throw me up really high, and I could take a picture. But, but anyway, we do have a motion to table to the second meeting in April. I think that's a, a wise decision. And I would ask the clerk at this point, unless there's any further discussion from board.
Can I just ask one question to the petitioner, before we vote on this? So, I hear you say that you are willing to meet with Andrew and allow the staff on the property and to come up with a list of reasonable items that need to bring you into compliance with the original contract?
Definitely. And as soon as Andrew has a chance to check his agenda, we will make time to meet him over and just go over everything that, you know, we know there's quite a bit to be going around to do. So, definitely, we're willing to meet with Andrew.
And the other thing that I saw in the, in the packet, I believe you already stated in your letter that you were willing to come into compliance with the, the annual business inspection process. There's a, there's a fee and an inspection process that needs to go along with that. Is that, that still stands? You're willing to go through those?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's still, it should be done, you know, yearly, just even for us and for the community. Yes, we are willing to do that, too. So.
Okay, thank you.
A procedural question of our attorney. Do we need to deal with the previous motion before we deal with this one? We had a motion of second to, to.
There was a motion in a second. But a motion to table is non debatable, and it takes precedence. I, I would say we don't have to do anything with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Trustee Jensen. So, we have a motion to table to the second meeting in April. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Miller?
Hi.
Trustee Anderson?
Hi.
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you for your consideration on that to, to the board members. And I'm sure staff looks forward to meeting with Sergio and company there. So.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Definitely, it sure wasn't a good experience that we went through. And we're just trying to keep our ass on track again. So, thank you.
Lesson learned, though.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Wells, does that conclude your report?
I have one other item for your information. Just wanted to mention to you that Casey's has submitted their building construction plan last week. The staff is currently reviewing those plans. Casey's goal is to be up and running by sometime in October. Once Casey's is up and running, this would support the building's priority, advance in quality commercial development, increasing sales tax revenue to the building.
Thank you, sir. Looking forward to having them moving some dirt over there. Okay. Next up, we have Public Relations and Intergovernmental Agreement Committee Chairperson, Trustee Miller. That is a mouthful. We got to shorten the name of that committee.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, mouthful. Speaking of mouthfuls, okay, here we go. Just a couple of things, new items on our website and our social media. And if you go to the homepage of the website under News and Announcements, there's two items regarding the COVID-19 virus and vaccinations that are now available. The first item is about pre-COVID-19 vaccinations for seniors sixty-five plus. And this is available now at the Green Belt Cultural Center on Green Bay Road in North Chicago. There is an attachment at the bottom of this page. If you click on that, you will get all the details of how to sign up, the phone number to call. And also, if there are people who need transportation, who are unable to get there on their own, you can contact Pace. And Pace has a dial or ride service. Actually, there's a one eight hundred number to call that's available for this. And the second item is COVID-19 update on a new vaccine call center. And apparently, the Illinois Department of Public Health now has a vaccine appointment call center for people who have difficulty navigating online services or making appointments. You know, there are a lot of people, we, we kind of take it for granted, the, those of us who are, you know, tech, technology savvy or technology exposed, that, well, you just go online, you know, look for an appointment. Well, how, how much fun has that been? Anybody that's trying to just make an appointment online, even if you know how to go online. But there are a lot of people who don't have that ability or have that equipment. So, there is now numbers, numbers that you can call. This call center is open seven days a week, from six AM to midnight. They have English and Spanish speaking call agents. And if the individual who calls doesn't have access to any of the information online, the agent will make an appointment on their behalf. And there is one other thing I want to emphasize. The, the agent will ask for people's names, address, and email if they have email. But they also ask for other things like date of birth and eligibility. But the agent will not ask for any financial information. These are all free, these vaccinations. And most importantly, people should be reassured that this call center will not share any private health information or personal information with the, with ICE, with U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency. So, this is all good news for people who are still in the hunt, if you will, for a vaccine. And it is becoming more available. But as we probably know, there's been a lot of anxiety out there for the, for the first couple of weeks of this period. And then, one more thing I'd like to just call everybody's attention to, out in front of our village hall, there is a new weatherproof our outdoor display site aboard. And our meetings will all be posted. The notices will be posted outside the building. People can't get in there right now, but you can't get in there on, on the weekend anyway. So, take a look at it if you're interested in the times and the dates and the, and the agendas for the upcoming board meetings and committee meetings. Now, I just wanted to thank the staff for making sure that that was in place, nicely in place, and available for everybody to take a look at. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have Public Safety Committee, Trustee Sidik.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just have a quick question on a follow up from last month on the structure, from the structure fire on Green Bay Road. That's still pretty much fenced off, and a lot of debris still out on the property. Do we have an update on that?
So, in the, in the last month, we've met with the, the contractor who's handling the insurance adjustment and the demo work. We believe that they're going to have the demolition permit in, in the next couple of weeks. We had our staff in contact with the family today regarding the current conditions. It looked like they had been sorting some material out in front of the property. We asked for a, a timeline of when they're going to complete that, so that we can stay on top of it and, and keep addressing it with them. But the, the, the big news from it is that the demolition is anticipated fairly shortly, as soon as the insurance claim is finalized.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And is the fire chief or sheriff's office with us, that they would, like to report on anything?
No one tonight.
No one tonight? Okay, thank you. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, Public Works, the man with the plan, Trustee Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items tonight. The first one is updates that we've talked about before. They were spelled out in the packet. There's some, every year, the, well, maybe every three years, I don't remember what it is, the Stormwater Management Commission comes up with updates to the watershed development ordinance. And they request that the communities that fall under their jurisdiction adopt those updates. We talked about them at a public works level. They've been available. And, and we agree that it's fairly okay to adopt these updates. So, I'll make a motion. Will we approve an ordinance adopting the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance as amended?
I will second it.
We have a motion by trustee, what's your name again? Oh, Anderson. And second by trustee Gust. Discussion.
Mayor, at the Public Works Committee meeting, we, one section was discussed at length, which, at least I thought was controversial. And that is new section five zero nine decimal zero four, Fee and Lue. I'd like to have that stricken before we vote on this thing. That's on page, there's no page number.
Yep, I know. That is, that's in the amendments, amendment number three.
Which one was it, Don? Five oh one, what?
Five oh nine.
Five zero nine decimal zero four, Fee and Lue Option for Storage Above Fifty Year Twenty-Four Detention, Volume Seven Point Five, Volume Seven Half Inches, I guess I did.
That is in the ordinance to have that stricken. That's the way the ordinance is written.
The ordinance is written without that in place.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say. It's in, it's still in the text of the Watershed Development Ordinance, per se.
But we removed that in our ordinance, adopting.
And in our, in the ordinance, our ordinance proper, under fifteen thirty-two zero one zero, Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance, as most recently amended, the county of Lake is hereby adopted, skipping the section numbers, with the exception of section number five oh nine dot oh four, and is in full enforcement effect in the Village Beach Park, found in its own compilation. So.
We already, we already took that out.
Yeah, it's on the front page there.
Yep.
Staff recommends omitting section five one nine dot oh four.
Yeah, we, we can't, can't amend the order, the Watershed Development Ordinance, per se, but we have accepted that one.
Okay, perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. I didn't realize that. I didn't read that carefully in that part. Okay, thank you. I withdraw my, my objection.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. We have a motion in a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Anderson?
Hi.
Trustee Sidik?
Hi.
Trustee Wells?
Can't hear you, Larry.
Bump's up, Larry.
I heard an I.
Trustee Gust?
Hi.
Jensen, you're, you're kind of broken up, Mr. Mayor. That was for me, that's an I.
It is, yeah. And Trustee Miller?
Hi.
Motion carries. Now, for point of order, this is an ordinance. And on our agenda, it does refer to a resolution. So, this would be ordinance number what?
Well, that's a good question. So, we haven't tabled anything in a long time. Is, is the tabled motion, is that going to be an ordinance?
No, that would, that, you can use that number. That's going to mess up your flow chart there.
Yes, I feel that would be, the tabled would be eight, so this would be nine.
This would be number nine?
Yes, if it's an ordinance, it would be number nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, you was the one that you had.
This would be eight.
This would be number eight, then, because number eight didn't come to.
It will not be one.
Yeah. Thank you. That's, I, I wanted to make sure we caught that.
You for catching that, sorry, Mayor, that's.
No problem. Well, I had a hunch she was already prenumbered anyway. So, because she comes up with them so quick, I'm, all right. So, that motion carries. That is ordinance number eight. Trustee Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second item would be for our annual street maintenance project. We've had a lot of discussion about this. Staff has identified the roads that are most in need at this. And I, I'm not going to read the list, if anybody would like to. That's, it's available on the website, I believe, the list of streets that we're doing. But I would make a motion that we award the 2021 MFT Street Maintenance Project to Peter Baker and Son of Green Oaks, Illinois, in the amount of eight hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred and eight dollars and zero cents. to Peter Baker and son of Green Oaks, Illinois, in the amount of eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and zero cents.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Addison. I heard a second by trustee Gust, I believe, as well as Miller.
Trustee Gus.
All right, uh, discussion. All right, then I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sittick.
I.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Trustee Gus.
I.
Trustee Johnson.
I.
Trustee Miller.
I.
Trustee Anderson.
I.
Motion carries and that is resolution number?
Seven.
Number seven. Thank you very much.
Okay, and the third item, um, is about our annual landscaping maintenance, uh, contract for this upcoming season. Uh, we did get several bids for this work and the low bidder was identified as Bart's Landscaping. And so I would, uh, motion that we approve a resolution accepting proposal from Bart's Landscaping Limited of Waukegan, Illinois for landscape maintenance services for entrance signs and village properties for the two thousand twenty-one season.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a second by trustee Wells. Discussion.
I'll just point out, um, I, I should have said it already. Uh, we budgeted ten thousand for this. The budget amount, uh, for this contract is nine thousand two hundred seventy dollars for the season.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Trustee Gus.
I.
Trustee Johnson.
I.
I. Trustee Anderson.
I.
Trustee Sittick.
I.
Motion carries and that's resolution number eight.
Didn't we say eight was, oh, resolution, I'm sorry. Yeah, you got me. I'll quit paying attention to that because it's none of my business.
This is almost as bad as baseball.
And that concludes my confusion.
Was that a ball or a strike? I, I don't know. I, I disagree either way. Oh, thank you very much. Um, I have no report tonight from the TIF committee and we'll move into staff reports. First up, we have the Bull Creek Stabilization Project Update. I'm throwing it over to Mark.
Uh, thank you, your honor. Um, Adrian, can you share the screen, please? It might be easier. Everybody, uh, Adrian's going to share the plans. Uh, SMC is, um, provided to the village. The, uh, plans that, uh, they're intending to send out for bid very near future here for the restoration work on south side of Bull Creek for those two properties that were purchased as part of the EPA's landslide grant. Uh, as you see, please continue the next one. Those are the two properties there essentially, and that's where the improvement's going to occur. That's existing conditions. Next slide, please. So this is pretty much, uh, the gist of what, uh, the, the plan is at this time. Um, they're going to, uh, decrease the slope of the bank from what it currently is, uh, and it'll still be done at a two to one slope. Um, the, uh, the shoreline or the Bull Creek shoreline is going to be, you'll see up at the top of that plan, there is, and you have that plan in your packet too, by the way, but, um, the stone there to, uh, address, uh, you know, the flow of the creek. Um, there were some questions, um, regarding the methods, uh, used. If you go to the next slide, please. And go to one more, two more. You'll see on this slide, uh, on the left, the top left, that drawing shows the plans for the stabilization of the stream bank. Um, it's just, you know, essentially going to have the stone at the bottom, uh, with a fabric. Uh, there was a question why not the gabions, uh, used, uh, but the engineer believes that this is just an effective, a more cost-effective measure uh, for, uh, accomplishing, uh, its function. And up the creek bed there, you'll see the, or the slope, you'll see that, uh, they plan on, um, putting some plantings in as well as, uh, the fabric to keep the, uh, side of the hill from further eroding in the future. So that, that's pretty much in a nutshell. That's pretty much in a nutshell. So the plan is to go out for bid, uh, to bid the project, like, in the next few, couple, two, three weeks. Uh, so they're meeting the requirement as part of our agreement with the Stormwater Management Commission to provide the plans to us. So we wanted to bring them to the board just to let you know, that they're ready to go and, uh, we didn't see any, uh, major showstoppers from, uh, you know, our staff review of it. So, um, you know, unless there's any questions or comments from the board, you know, they're going to proceed.
I see that Sharon and, uh, Ernesto are on the call. Um, I wanted to raise one point that a resident brought to my attention. The resident, I believe, to the east, um, of the subject properties here, has a large maple tree that they're, uh, planning on removing. They're apparently, uh, thirty years ago, it wasn't a big deal. And now I guess one of the trunks is getting a little bit, uh, uh, it's making them nervous. It's a pretty sizable, uh, multi-trunk tree. And, uh, so the questions were about, uh, you know, are there any requirements from the village, et cetera? And I said, no. Um, but then the question came up about, should we have the stump removed? Should we leave the stump? And I thought, well, you know what? There's people smarter than me that are, uh, going to be working on a project immediately west of you. Uh, I, I'll place at least a, uh, request for them to at least observe what's going on and maybe stop over and talk. Uh, they're retired. I think they're home most of the time. But, um, I, I, it sounds like you can't miss the tree. He says it's eighty-plus feet tall and multiple trunks there. So if you guys are, uh, are out there or one of the team is out there, maybe, uh, you could, uh, have a conversation, just maybe, at least put them at ease or, or maybe that impacts in some way what you're planning on doing there. So.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you, Sharon.
Mayor, while we're on that topic, I was puzzled by the removal of the trees on the properties where the houses were demolished. I would always have thought that the vegetation is a, is a, uh, benefit to stabilization. That, uh, those trees, probably the roots, probably helping to keep that soil in place.
Well, not only that, they were just sort of half removed. The, you know, the bottom part of the trunks are still there and.
Well, that's aesthetic, but I, but I'm thinking more of state, of a bank stabilization. Why in the world would you want to take the vegetation out?
Well, we did.
Go ahead.
I'll go for it. Uh, so this is Ernesto with SMC. So the reason that those trees were topped and the stumps were left in place were the fact that they are stabilizing that bluff currently. When we go do and do the rebuild of the slope that the drawings that you guys have, you know, we're going to remove those stumps because we have to basically, we're rebuilding that, that slope from the stream bank up to the top of the bluff. And so in order to minimize any erosion and instability in the bluff as is, we left those root masses intact and just took out what we could as part of the demolition project. And, you know, balanced our, our construction that way. So.
I understand why you, why you'd leave the, 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 the lower portion of the tree. And I'm just curious to why that had, they had to go out in the first place. If they, I mean, if they impeded the demolition of the house, that, that makes sense. Otherwise, I would have thought you'd leave them.
No, we, we actually, um, we wouldn't normally take trees or, or any kind of material other than the fact that we were rebuilding the slope. That's why those were removed. Since there's going to be so much work done and, and the reason that we took half of them down is so that the weight of the trees, um, there wouldn't be any falling or any further, uh, loss of land. If for some reason there was a huge rain event, those trees, they're, they're all in the process of moving down that slope. So this was really our way to address it over the winter until we could, um, address it in the spring when better, better weather. They may have better weather.
Yeah, the, the grade through that area, uh, I think if I'm, if I'm thinking about the trees that you're addressing, the grade through that whole area is going to be cut significantly. So that those, those trees would be gone either way.
In other words, the ground that that tree is connected to is going to be gone once they change that slope. That, that entire.
Yeah, and they're already on the slope. All of the trees that we removed were on, were at the very top portion of the slope and not actually in the yard area of the homes.
Oh, okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
All right. All right, well, this is an informational update. Uh, if there's no other questions, uh, we can move on. Just want to give another opportunity.
So it sounds, Sharon, based on what you said, the, the question that the mayor brought up from the other homeowner, that would kind of answer his question that the, the weight of the top of that tree is dangerous because that can pull the bluff down. But if they were to cut it and leave the stump, the root system would act to stabilize the ground to an extent. Now, granted, it, it won't be living anymore, so that root system won't continue to grow, but for quite some time, I think it'll still stabilize that chunk of land. Is that correct?
Oh, you're muted, Sharon.
Yeah, you'd be surprised. That, that might still grow.
Yeah.
They, I believe, and Ernesto can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that property owner did contact us about the trees, and whether or not we were going to, we would be able to take down that tree. And I think part of his concern was that there was, um, I think that was the property where there was a fire, right? Last year, a brush fire where he was burning leaves. Is that the, am I thinking of the same person?
This would be directly east. Uh, this is, uh, the Richardson's. It would be directly east of the, uh, eastmost property.
Okay.
The fire was in the west then, right?
Fire was on the west side.
West side. Okay, yeah.
They mentioned the tree was scorched.
It was different. Nevermind.
Tree questions, that's for sure, yes.
Yeah.
You were, yeah, you were contacted by one by email about trees and that was the gentleman that was to the west.
Okay, so that's, this may be the other neighbor then.
Yes.
But, uh, nice couple though. I'm sure they'll, um, they'll listen to any advice you can give them and, and, uh, because it's so close to what's going to be going on there anyway. It's probably a wise decision that it goes away. So, good.
We'll stop by. We'll stop by both of them just to let them know, especially once we get close to construction.
Yeah.
We'll try to be around so that, you know, usually that's when everyone comes out and has all kinds of questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very good. Okay, uh, then we will, uh, move on to item B.
Thank you, Mayor. Item B is a continuation of, uh, this project. Uh, item B is an amendment to the existing intergovernmental agreement that we have with the Stormwater Management Commission to allow them to complete the project, uh, for a small portion of Bull Creek. That's on the, actually the village-owned property to the north of these two properties. Um, they're going to put a boulder toe, as they call it, that will link directly between this project and on those properties as well as the work that was previously done to the, the, the creek as it meanders to the east. So this would be a revision to the IJ to allow them to do that work also going forward.
So it's basically an additional twenty-eight feet of stream bank stabilization, but it, it goes on to the village property rather than the properties across because the lot lines are really crazy.
Yes.
In there. So that's, that's basically all of it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Addison.
Second, Miller.
Second by Gus.
Second by trustee Miller. She beat you this time, Richard.
Sounds good.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
I.
Trustee Johnson.
I'm back. I.
Trustee Miller.
I.
Trustee Addison.
I.
Trustee Sittick.
I.
Trustee Wells.
I.
Motion carries. All right. Anything further from staff?
Nothing. Just, uh, thank you, uh, Ernesto and Sharon for joining us this evening and working with staff to get this project going. Thank you.
Good to see at least one of you, Sergio, or Sergio, or Ernesto's hiding, so, uh.
No, I actually updated my laptop today and somehow killed it. So that was the only thing I had a camera on.
I tell you what, uh, Microsoft has done their level best in the last month to destroy everything good about Microsoft. I don't know what's going on. They've blown up our email. They've blown up our scanner and printers. And it's all automatic updates that we have no control over. So this has been a bad month for the Microsoft folks.
Have you tried taking that little piece of electrical tape off of that little round hole on the top of your, uh, screen?
All right, I have no other, uh, no old business on the agenda tonight. Uh, is there any new business to come before the board? All right, uh, now would be, uh, item nine, citizens wishing to address the board. Any citizen, uh, present that wishes to address the board on any or all topics? Please don't be shy. Unmute yourself, uh, give us your name and state your case. As I'm looking at a screen full of village trustees and staff members. Okay.
I'm surprised the upcoming candidate isn't signed on to ask questions and participate.
We have no cause tonight for an executive session and, uh, we're down to that item number twelve.
Mayor.
Yes.
It would be my honor to offer a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by trustee Jensen. Do we have a second? Second by trustee Gust. Any discussion on that? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gus.
I.
Trustee Johnson.
I.
Trustee Miller.
I.
Trustee Anderson.
I.
Trustee Sittick.
I.
Trustee Wells.
All right, thank you all. We are adjourned. Made it through another one.
Good night.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good night.
Good night.
See you later.
Good night.